And I see there's a quorum present, so I will call the Rules Review Committee to order. And all members are present. First item on the agenda, number one, approval of the minutes from March 23, 2021. What do you have a chance? Motion from Watson, second Neil, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? And that carries. Number two, discussion and possible action on draft rules prepared by attorney's office related to the role, rights, and responsibilities of a committee chair. And do we, either Anne or Nate want to take, start us off on this?
All right, so as you can see, we took rule mainly seven to add in the chairperson and committee, I guess, duties and roles. Basically, we took what was already existing and then just also made clarification and additions that it also then applied to the chairperson or committee as well. The first section that starts it all off before we get to the actual rules, then we also said, you know, this also applies to the standing committees. And then the very last, Rule 19, that governs council and committees, both standing and non-standing. So really, the only thing that I guess I wanted to talk to you guys about is, under under Rule seven, Part A, there's basically a choice that we need to have you guys talk about. So if, in a committee, if both the chairperson and the vice-chairperson are absent, what do you want to happen? In the council, if the mayor and the council president are both absent, then the meeting is still called by the clerk, and then they select a member to preside at the meeting. Do you want that same thing to happen at committees, or do you want it to be rescheduled? So that's why that parts in parentheses with a slash, because it was basically language for one or the other, and you guys pick.
Okay, I see a question from Tom, so.
Sure, well, I guess the initial reaction I get to that is, you know, in the council scenario, you know, if the, you know, the mayor and council president are not around, we still have a large number of people to address an issue and a reasonable representation to vote on it. In a committee of five people with two of them missing, you're down to three people to, you know, discuss and vote on something on the agenda, and is that, you know, a good representation to move forward with, is my question.
It is a good question, because yeah, if there's, if two people are missing, you're barely making a quorum, so.
Yeah. So again, we still have a quorum, but if that's the, I guess, the thinking that you'd want to do, then we can do with the language of, then reschedule it. I mean, it's, it's for you guys to decide, I just presented two options.
Would this also, would this matter if it's, if the, if both, if the chair and vice-chair are missing due to a vacancy, or doesn't, or wouldn't that make a difference, or?
Doesn't make a difference.
Doesn't make a difference, okay. Sarah?
I would agree with Alder Neil. I think we should just have it be rescheduled, because at that point, there's not a robust discussion going on, and, yeah.
You know, perhaps, Mr. Chair, if I may, perhaps, you know, we might have the flexibility, though, so it doesn't have to be all or one or the other. If there were a pressing issue before the committee, you know, something, you know, that was a dire issue related to time, or, you know, a development proposal or something that really needed an answer and couldn't wait, perhaps, you know, the three could make a decision there to act on, you know, something before the committee, instead of just saying, "Well, we can't." So I don't know, thoughts on that?
I guess I'm, I'm just gonna expound, because this has happened quite a bit, at least last term, SISAM, we had three people quite frequently, and we didn't know until we got there and somebody didn't show up, you know, we're like, and so the two of us would go, we would take turns and motion second each other. So that's the thing, is I want everybody to know that it may happen, that you're there, and then if we say, if you have to have more than three, then you're gonna reschedule at that time, because it has happened. We haven't had that much problem this term, but last term was quite a bit. So I just want to put that out there. And then, I guess, to Tom's idea, is that do we leave the decision-making to the chair and the department head about what is, you know, if there's something that's pressing? I mean, I would think that somebody would have to speak to the department head, and, you know, this, again, I think, I'm not on SISAM, but I think a SISAM. You know, there are so many things that are, you know, Eric finds pressing that has to get through, because we have to get through council by this time to get bids out, or whatever it is. And so that would be, that would be my concern of making the hard and fast rule, because there are always exceptions.
But doesn't, isn't this, doesn't this rule talk to the point that if the vote, if both the chair and the vice-chair of the committee are missing, then we reschedule? But if, if just two members are missing, and a chair or a vice-chair is present, wouldn't the meeting still be able to carry, according to the rule?
Yeah, it's only when they're both absent.
Yeah. So, I don't know if that makes, does that make a difference?
Well, further down under A, I mean, it seems, the committee could select any member then to preside in the absence of both the chair and the vice.
And we have.
And they, yeah.
So, I mean, I guess the big question is, should we or should we not have the flexibility to act, you know, given a situation that kind of requires prompt action? And I think it'd be nice to kind of leave that open, you know, and then have a, you know, discussion, and vote on it and say, you know, I would move that we, you know, close the meeting, because there's nothing pressing, and we'll take it up at our next regular meeting, or a special meeting if we have to. But if there's something here that is dire, you know, one of us could say, you know, I would move to go ahead and address this topic because of its nature, and we would vote and say, "Yes, let's address it," you know, and then have the discussion and vote on it. That gives us flexibility, I think, instead of being rigid.
Sarah?
So if we want that option, couldn't we just strike the committee meeting shall be rescheduled and just leave the last part, and then whoever is elected to, you know, chosen to preside over that particular committee, they can make that choice as you go along? So if you wanted to reschedule, you could say, "Okay, we'd like to table these motions, or the, you know, these items until next meeting." Could you do that if you still had a quorum, and you just kept that last bit?
Yeah, I think so. I think that would actually then solve both issues. If, by, I guess, yeah, by doing that, if you want to have a member preside at the meeting, and then they want to table it even with the quorum, then that basically is rescheduling at the same time. So I think, yeah, I think that's, that works, that solves both issues.
And would we need to table every item on the agenda then, Anne? Or do we do, is there something we could do overarching at the beginning, or do we, does whomever presiding have to go through and do everything different, separate?
That's a good question. I wouldn't do them separately. I think I'd probably just postpone the meeting and reschedule, get a motion and a second vote to postpone the entire meeting that's scheduled to start at that hour. You convene it, establish you have a quorum, and then for whatever reason, or because we provide you that opportunity in the rules, you move then to reschedule the meeting. And I don't think you need to go through each agenda item.
And so it would be more of a rescheduling than tabling? I mean, I'm trying to think of the motion.
Yeah, you're not taking any action or having any discussion on the items, so you're not really.
Tabling, yeah.
Individual things to table it, you're, you're just rescheduling the meeting, you're just not holding a meeting.
Okay.
And the council could always, you know, take up, if they didn't meet, or didn't reschedule the meeting, the council can always take up items that need urgent action and suspend the rule that requires it come from a committee if the three that were not the chairman or the vice-chair didn't want to consider.
Okay. Tom, did you have your hand up? Jim, sorry.
I can be Tom.
Well, you're already, you're already looped.
I agree that we have to have the option, if we need to table or suspend the meeting or not, depending what's on the agenda. But either way, whether the meeting continues and we make recommendations or not, it's all going to council for final votes anyway, so everybody will have the council to go over it again. But I think we have to leave it open.
Tom?
Yeah, I think it all comes down to the term "quorum." You know, "quorum" means there are ample, you know, representatives present to act, you know? So you can't, I don't think we really should have a rule that says you have a quorum, but you can't act, you know? So we really need the flexibility.
Good discussion. Yeah, and I think I totally agree, because I think, you know, the absence of both chair and a vice-chair is gonna be a rare circumstance indeed, so it's good to let the meeting move forward, even, you know, if, in those, in those rare cases. And then whoever's appointed chair for that particular meeting can make that decision, so. Sarah?
So I would move to, to, I don't know, not like, like, push this to council, like, change the rule. I would move to change the rules accordingly with the highlighted and crossed-out portions with the committee meeting shall be rescheduled, also crossed out in Rule seven, Part A. But then I would move to accept these rule changes.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor, we have a second? Second from Neil. One thing I'd like to add, and I don't know if this needs to be an amendment or something, but I noticed in Rule seven, Part C, questions of order, you scratched alderman and changed that to member, and I think that was done as part of, you know, kind of clarifying, you know, what we were talking, what is talking about in that rule. But would it be possible to change the rest of the aldermans, especially in seventeen A, B, and C, to gender-neutral terms?
There's, at the very beginning of the.
I was trying to see where one was.
The very beginning of the Code of Ordinances, it talks about genders and pronouns, so it covers the entire thousand pages of the code. So it's already in the ordinances, it's already codified that if, where it says he or she, or whatever it means, it means anybody.
Okay.
So that's why we've never entertained changes or amendments and gone back through the code to change he to she, or he slash she, or hers, or whatever, because it's already provided for in the code.
Okay.
And I guess, the main reason why I did the alderman cross out was because it applies to both council members and committee members, and so I just put member as a blanket term to cover both, instead of saying alderperson and committee member.
Yeah.
Which is just less worded.
That's, that's what I, that's what I figured the reason was, and then it just, it just kind of stuck out at me, that the rest of the, yeah, the rest of the ordinance referred to alderman instead of a more neutral term. But we do have that in the definitions in the front, so I guess that's okay then, so.
The other thing I guess I wanted to talk about then is under Rule seventeen E, with the termination of debate by calling the question, at the last meeting, we talked about kind of copying how the county does it with, if you've queued up to speak, you get to speak, and so that's what E now is basically codifying.
Okay.
Seventeen E.
Seventeen E. I think we talked about this at the last meeting.
Yeah, and so this was my language then to, to do it.
Okay.
We just talked about that we should try to do it, so.
I don't know, Sarah, do you want to amend your motion to include that also, or do we need to, or, I guess not, because it's already?
Yeah, it's already in there.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's awesome how you worded it. I think it's great to, to allow people who are in the queue to.
To finish out.
Yeah, to say, and then, then vote to call the question, so.
Okay, any more discussion?
Do you want to change the word alderman to alder? Just take off M-A-N and M-E-N? We could do that through alder, make that consistent, does that make sense, or does that throw everything off?
No, I can, it's an easy strike line through.
Okay.
Any alder or member?
Yeah, I've taken to using alder all the time.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I don't know, he's raising his hand in the back, I don't know if there's an issue back in the control room or not, but, Sarah?
He's yelling at me, because I'm not.
Oh, you're not using your microphone. Oh, turn on the microphone on, please. I'm resting, I'm rusty on my floor manager signal, so.
Stand up two jeepers.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second, and any more, if I seeing no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that carries. Okay. I'll scoot back to my agenda here. Number three, discussion and possible action on procedures for alderpersons requesting to provide public comment to council as a citizen.
All right, I did conduct more research this time, because as you've seen in this term particularly, we've seen alders request to leave their seats at the end of the meeting and provide public comment. I think it's always been in relation to an item that's been on the agenda, and not something that wasn't on the agenda, but at that time, you, they, they are alders for purposes of these meetings, and while they are also citizens, they're not citizen members when it comes to public comment. So I included in your packet what I found from the DOJ and the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, and basically, I think it says, "No, you're not a member of the public for purposes of providing public comment at the end of a council meeting." So we didn't do anything, because it's not in the rules, so I didn't address it in any way, unless you want it clarified and put in the rules, other than my just advising you that I would, would give this opinion now if asked at a meeting. Can I get up and leave my seat and make public comment? I'd advise against it, but if you want that codified, we can certainly make that clear in our council rules.
All right. Sarah?
But they could still go and speak at the beginning if they entered their name on an agenda item at the beginning.
I would say no, because if, that, that is for all public comment, again, so that applies the same at the end as it does at the end, but it's also for items appearing on the agenda. So you are the elected officials that should be talking about those items as the elected official from your desks when that item comes up for discussion. So I don't think it's ever appropriate for you to leave your seats to come up to the front, well, either at the beginning to address the public or whatever, or at the end. Make your comments during the item that's up on the agenda for consideration.
I mean, so then, this is, this is clearly in the law, like, we don't need to put it in our rules?
I don't think you do, but I don't think it would hurt if you wanted it in there, if you wanted it clarified. I don't think it would hurt anything to add that. I mean, we've added the role of the chair, a lot of people don't have that in their rules. It just depends on what works for certain councils, they want some of it spelled out, and other stuff, they just rely on Robert's rules, so.
Yeah, and yeah, I think this, yeah, open meeting law, FAQ number twelve, I think is, is very enlightening, you know, considering that as councilpersons, you know, we can't, you know, we have our opportunities to speak during the meeting, so we should leave that public comments, either at the, at the beginning of the meeting, or public comment at the end, for, for the public to say their, say their piece.
You're still citizens, but you're not acting as members of the public when you're convening.
Mm-hmm.
In other words.
Yeah. Jim?
Also, I think I noticed one time when alder spoke on a matter that was not on the agenda, so that might have been improper.
Which I think is kind of Sarah's question, too, can they just get up and talk about something not on the agenda during the before or the after? I guess I'm gonna advise against it, honestly.
I would also take that position.
I know, we've had that, we've, we've, we had that discussion earlier about, you know, like shout-outs and, and whatnot, using, you know, using this forum to, you know, give somebody kudos, or to mention, you know, an upcoming event, or something like that.
I think, I think that's happened over the years under, like, committee reports, or there's another item at the beginning of the council agenda, the business agenda, where, in my opinion, people have not used that header appropriately, but, you know, there's certainly no problem in announcing, like, a neighborhood meeting, or an event, or something like that, but I think that would come under announcements. Isn't there an announcements, Leslie?
I think it's like mayor's communication, or something like that.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
Or communications and recommendations from the mayor, reports of officers and committee reports. Yeah, so if it, even, even committee reports, if we just put committee reports, and then people start talking, we should agendize which committees are providing reports, and on what should also be agendized. But I think I'm gonna, I don't know that you need to put it in your rules, but I would advise against alders making public comment during a meeting before or after.
Perhaps, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Perhaps if there were a specific item, like an announcement, this could be handed to the mayor beforehand, you know, the previous week, days before, whatever, to become a, you know, an announcement item, you know? So the mayor can say, you know, Alder Neil has indicated that there's going to be a meeting of the blah blah, such and such coming up, so, you know, there, I've gotten my news in there, I do not have to speak as a, as a, you know, for public comment, or whatever.
No, I think that would be an excellent idea, because you could, yeah, you could, if, if you had the time, the time before a meeting to get it on the agenda, then you're, you don't run afoul of open meeting laws, and you have your opportunity to say, you know, your, your shout-out, or your attaboy, or something like that. Sarah?
So would this also, like, sort of be applied to council alders that are not on certain committees? So like, if I attended the SISAM committee, I wouldn't be able to speak as a public citizen? I would, I could speak then as an alder, even though I'm not part of that committee?
That might be a problem, now that we've indicated that all the rules apply to committee members as well, doesn't it? Because if we make that assumption, and then we go back to this FAQ twelve, I mean, it says it's intended to allow, well, statute allows a limited exception to the general notice requirements of the open meeting law, which allows members of the public to bring up items not specifically on the agenda. It is intended to allow local governments to be responsive to their constituents and allow the body to receive information from members of the public. It was not intended to allow members of the body to bring up items for discussion without placing them on the agenda and giving notice to the public. So that kind of gets to your last question, you know, can I get up and talk about something not on the agenda? No, I really don't think we should. I think we should properly agendize that for whatever committee, so.
So I'm still technically part of the body?
But you are.
Even if I'm not on that specific committee, I'm still part of this.
Well, but they talk about unnoticed matters, so if it's a noticed matter, and you're simply attending a committee meeting of another committee, and you're still a member of the body, the overarching body, I think you can comment on an item on the agenda. I would keep it to an item on their agenda, but you'd still have to be recognized by the chair to speak. We've seen that quite a bit, actually. We've seen members of the council attend meetings of what, of committees upon which they do not sit and offer.
Sure.
Comment or ask questions, and I think that's perfectly acceptable.
I know, it's, yeah, I've seen that happen, yeah. You know, you come to another committee, and you want, you know, if, if the item, you know, may have something to do with your district, and you're not on that committee, you're gonna want to be able to.
Sure, right.
To speak, or say if it's a, if it's a planned commission or something, you want to be able to speak, so.
So yes, I think you can, Sarah, on another committee, come and make public comment.
Yeah, I think, Becky, did you have something first, or?
I was just gonna say, I see that specifically a lot for SISAM.
Yeah.
You know, you have a lot of things that really directly affect your residents, and I think that the alder from that district, be it a stop sign, or whatever, or a street recon, you know, whatever it is, I think that it's important that they be able even to, to ask questions, so they can go back to their residence before the council meetings, so I don't see a problem with that. But I think it, you know, we, historically, we've had alders go up during SISAM meetings, you know, and do, you know, their address about that, so I think it is better if we, what has been happening is if they just take a seat and be recognized by the chair, and ask as a, you know, just a council member representing their district, even if they're not on that committee.
I would agree.
Tom?
Yeah, and just maybe a minute point, but typically at committee meetings, the last item before adjournment is, you know, future agenda items, you know? And it seems to me possibly then that any non-member of the committee, another alder who's in the audience, could come up and say, "I think I would suggest for the next meeting that you might take up this issue, because I think it's important."
Yep.
That would be okay.
Absolutely, that's a good, good suggestion.
So how, because I think, I think sort of by nods, like, it would be a good thing to have it just in writing, that this is part of the rule set? So would you then sort of create something and then bring it back to us, or?
I can do that.
Or could it just go to council?
You can, I can do it either way. You can direct me to prepare something and send it on to council, or ask that I bring it back to your next meeting.
Yeah, I think this might, might need to be clarified, so.
See, I guess I would suggest, put something together and then just bring it to council. I don't think we need to relook at it.
Yep. So Nate's got a great suggestion here. We'd put it under Rule sixteen, citizens' right to address council, and under the rights at the beginning, a citizen may address the council under either, you know, Rule five one, or five B, or whatever it is, we'll just say a citizen not including a member of the council. So we can, we can make that clear rather easily, if you want me to send something like that to the July council meeting? Okay.
Anne? Phrantetically, you might add, you know, per state statute.
Okay. Okay.
And then, you know, making that change, that would also filter down to committees, too, so the same rule would apply to the committee.
Mm-hmm. All right, so you've agreed by consensus, we don't need a formal motion and a second on this, or did we, we didn't make one on this one, didn't we?
There was no motion, there was no motion on the floor.
Okay, just directing me to, by consensus, to do that for the July council meeting, am I correct? Okay, very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's painless. Let's see. Number four, discussion and possible action on draft of City Owassa Public Records Request Policy and Procedures and Responding to Requests from Elected Officials.
So Leslie and Jerry Klein and I have been meeting to try to put together a public records request policy and procedures to handle the ever-increasing number of open record requests we receive, both in scope and in number. And some are from the public, some are anonymous, some are from alders, and, I mean, in my opinion, alders are entitled to this information anyway, but therein lies the problem. Do you, as a council, or would you recommend the council that you be treated as regular citizens, or that you somehow not have to pay any fees we would typically charge a citizen for location, for instance, because you are an elected official? I mean, those are the kinds of decisions we are trying to get you to make. So I actually copied a bunch of different policies, and this one was drafted primarily based on, actually, the state court system. So I went through and talked about actually appointing the clerk, the public records officer, because Leslie, right now, manages, any, any requests that comes in is to be filed with the clerk's office, so they are aware of any open record requests that's pending and open at any time. Leslie does a good job of forwarding those to folks whom she think may have responsive records, and then unless she makes an agreement, I think, with the record custodian, she follows up to make sure they're timely answered, and that she puts together the letter of denial or response back to the requestor and sends the records out. So I think the point I want to put your, or direct your attention to would be, let's see, where did we talk about that? Okay, the last two paragraphs, "In responding to requests from elected officials, public records officer shall determine if the records requested are related to a matter reasonably expected to appear on an agenda for discussion and action, in determining whether the official shall be charged a fee in responding to the request. Unless preempted by ordinance, the official shall not be charged in that event, but will be treated as any other request, or if the request for records is not reasonably related to a matter upon which he or she will be expected to take action." So I also polled my peers across the state, and that seemed to be what they did as well. So even though it's burdensome, I mean, that's the person's right. So if somebody wants fifteen thousand pages of environmental contamination. So if somebody wants 15,000 pages of environmental contamination reports, but they sit on the Economic Development Committee, let's say, and it's pertinent to their work and they're reviewing, you know, environmental contamination results and they need to move forward with that, I would say that's reasonably related to the work of their committee appointment and they're gonna be needing to make some future decisions, you know, on whether or not to conduct more testing, let's say, or something like that. So then at that point, we would, or Leslie would decide she could ask us for advice, but this gives her the authority to, if, if adopted by the council, to simply say, nope, you've said you're on this committee and you've told me this item's coming up, so you won't be charged any location fees for these records. But let's say you, you're the chair of ED and you have nothing to do with transit and you want 15,000 pages of transit records, that's fine, that's your right to have them and we're not gonna, you know, tell you you can't have them or ask you why you want them. But then if there's a, a location fee involved in searching emails or something, let's say, then you would be charged a location fee. And that's the only fee we can really charge, other than for what Jerry referred to as transport media, which would include the hard costs for a jump drive or whatever piece of hardware we would put those records on to provide to, then we would charge for that as well. Unless it's related to an item you're working on, then you wouldn't be charged for any of it, I don't think. So that, that's something you really need to talk about. The other thing the statute talks about in 1935 is we get requests on occasion, both from alders and non-alders, saying, well, this topic I'm requesting information on is in the public interest, so you should waive any fees at all. That's a really hard, that's really somewhat subjective, but, you know, if we leave that up to the public record officer to determine, well, you're asking for these records as largely in the public interest, so we won't charge you for those, that's another decision that has to be made. That's permitted by statute. We've typically applied it to media sources like newspapers and so forth. When there's been a big thing, you know, should we take down the mall? Or should we build a convention center or whatever, then, then they ask for records and it's something that's been a hot topic on a number of committee agendas or council, for instance, then we would probably find a release of those records in the public interest and waive the fee. But again, there, we don't have any real objective criteria to determine whether or not an item or a topic's in the public interest. So those are the sorts of things we want you to discuss because it's really up to you folks how you want to be treated when it comes to open record requests, whether you should be charged, not charged, how you want us to handle those.
So this policy statement, this is a new policy statement then?
Yep, completely brand new, yep.
So we haven't had anything like this in the past?
Correct.
Manage our public records?
Which we're kind of doing on the side anyway, outside of records review, but because it, it, or outside of rules review, but because it touches on public officials. And we didn't know if you wanted it included in your rules. We thought we'd bring it to this committee for discussion.
Okay, so. Anybody wanna take, give a crack at this first? Okay, yeah.
I, I guess I, I would, um, I, I know I want as much information as possible in completing my task for council, but I also wanna be cognizant of the time that staff takes and also of any kind of materials fees. I don't wanna add that on to, you know, our budget and our costs, right? So, um, I mean, I would hope that we would, you know, as council people, take that up on our own, you know? But I guess I, I, is it all digital requests or have there been more paper things? And do you know estimation, like estimation, like what costs? I don't know if you can say that, like how much it's cost so far this year?
I don't know about the cost because the statutes only allow you to charge a location fee if the cost to locate records exceeds $50. And the location fees come from CCITC largely, which is an independent organization and they have their own set of fees. And so the search in the olden days meant locating printed records down in the vault in the basement or in storage in a box off-site where you had to drive, somebody had to drive over and get a forklift and pull a bunch of boxes out and blow dust off paper records. Now it means IT assigning a staff person to sit in a lab down in the basement and with the search terms and the names of the email boxes provided to them, sit and run all of these searches and they can estimate fairly quickly at that person's rate of pay, how long that'll take them, based on looking at the request and how many record hits they get, how long it's gonna take them to put it together. And that's what they use to estimate their location fee and if it's over 50, we can charge it. I, I think that happens with regularity. Leslie can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's almost every request. We have seen a couple instances where people have said, okay, well then drop this person's email address. And then they have us recalculate it and as soon as it gets to 49 or $48, then that's their record request because then we can't charge for locating the records or running a location search. The only other thing you can charge for is like the jump drives and you can't charge for any of the time spent redacting. You can charge for paper, which before, under our ordinance, was a quarter a copy. We've reduced that to three cents a copy because that's more in line of what it costs us to copy. So 25 was excessive, but rarely people ask for print copies anymore. And you have to provide them the information in the form in which they request it. So. Even if you don't wanna adopt a policy or make any comments on this policy or recommend advancing the policy forward, the rules review committee, we're hoping, would still provide us some discussion and input on how you want us to handle open record requests for alders. That would be immensely helpful.
And I, I, I can understand, you know, the, uh, where you're getting at, you know, if an alder was to, to request records that were, say, outside of the scope of what they needed to do to perform their, their task, you know, like, like you mentioned, you know, somebody sitting on a committee that was, that was requesting a record that was pertinent to the, to the committee work. Because I could see alders making record requests to circumvent the system, you know, on, by, of benefit of their constituents, so. That's, it would be good to have that ability for the, the custodian of the records to say, oh, this is not, you know, this may not, this be pertinent to your, you know, work, you know, duties or works, so.
Of course, eventually if it gets to council and it wasn't, you know, and any alder may have to vote on it eventually, just it didn't go through a committee upon which they sat, I suppose then the argument could be made, well, it's gonna eventually get to council and then I will have to be informed on this topic and vote on it. There's no really easy black and white answers. I guess basically we just wanna know from you whether we should treat alders the same as regular citizens or whether because of your status as the elected officials that are running our government that you should have full access to whatever records you request without payment? I, it really doesn't matter. You just need to tell us what to do.
Jim?
So a question is if I wanted some records, what is my responsibility with those records after I obtain them? Can I do whatever I want with them?
Yes, if they're publicly releasable, once we release them to you, they're outside of our hands and we have to assume that they're gone. I mean, you can do whatever you want with them. The only difference is because you are my client and we have a client, attorney-client, organizational-client relationship, alders are entitled to any information, whether it's confidential or not. So if you came up to my office and said, I wanna see your notes, I wanna look through your files, I wanna see this, I wanna see that, I've always shared everything I have with an elected official. But I'm not gonna give it to you in a paper copy because then I could potentially lose track of where it goes. And it's not, not everything. In other words, you get to see everything. If it's redacted, um, and I've had alders ask me, well, can now I just give out what you gave me? No, you need to not give this or that out because I would redact that for public release, but for you, you can see everything because you're, you're my client.
So some things that you give me that are okay for the public, any pub, so.
I would tell you, I would tell you.
If a news media would call me and say, I wanna a copy of that, I could give it to them or would I have to send them to the city to get their own copy?
No, you can give people copies of things if you want.
Okay.
Their public records.
I would hate to see.
You know, you have a copy of an executed contract and somebody says, oh, can I see that? Who did they hire to do that development or whatever? Oh, call the clerk's office. I'm not gonna show you this contract. You need to get your own copy. No, that's a public record.
Just because I asked for it doesn't mean I can't give it to other people.
Right.
Sure.
It's a public record.
Good deal.
And I will tell you if you can't.
I know you would.
Or if you shouldn't.
I would just hate to see someone in this position just get so many documents for whatever project they're working on and, and cost us more money than it's really worth. I mean, I would, I would hope that they would narrow their search to what they're actually looking for and keep the cost to the public down.
Tom?
Yeah, I guess this might be a thing where maybe, you know, Wausau just doesn't do its own thing. Can we kind of, you know, poll your peers around the state or see if there's some kind of state, you know, statute or something to deal with this issue so we can just fall in line with norm?
Well, like I said, they just, they, they basically said, we give this stuff at no cost to our alders. I think I checked with Green Bay and a couple others. The few that responded fell in line with what we were saying. They didn't put it in their rules. I don't know if they have put it in print in a separate policy. They just said, yeah, when alders call us, if they tell us or they can show us that it's on a committee, upcoming committee agenda, then we don't charge them for anything.
I think it'd be nice to.
So we can do it informally.
If, if an alder requests this kind of stuff and there are costs associated with it, it should also be part of the public record how much it's costing the city to fulfill these requests. Because that's something that's never really talked about and we have spent thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars.
In staff time.
And staff time.
And you do get a bill from IT, yep.
With, uh, with IT, so, um, you know, that should be part of the public record too. You know, at a cost of X dollars, this information was compiled, you know? And then, you know, I'm sorry, as a, as an alder and, you know, a, a partial keeper of, you know, the, the city's, you know, uh, financial assets in a way, then, you know, I should be able to say it was worth, you know, that money to get me all this stuff, you know? And usually for like no real reason when the job's done, but.
Yep, we can certainly track that and because IT is separate, we do, we can tell you exactly how many dollars because those employees have to track their time and report it to Jerry so he can always break down exactly how many hours, which employees, what it cost for them. And we can do that too if we're asked upfront. We'll keep track of how much time it takes us and tell you how much the taxpayer spent on our staff redacting things and so forth.
I think Sarah first and then Jim, so.
So I, I would wonder, can we differentiate it between if an alder asks for a public information request, then they are acting as a private citizen because they have access to that as in their alder position already?
Right, they don't need to call it an open record request. They're asking for information.
Right, so if they're just asking for information to, to be informed, they wouldn't go through the open records request process, right? So then if they were going through the open records request process and that means that potentially that information is then gonna be turned public, right?
I'm not sure they're thinking that when they make that request though. Some may think they have to formally use the magic words or use a magic form. I'm making an open record request under 19.31 through 35. Some are more formal than others. You, you can't, I think the statute says you can't, like, play games with people or require that they use magic words or quote the statute or even say, I'm making an open record request. I want, I wanna see a copy of this or that. That's an open record request, whether they use the magic words or not. So honestly, I, I don't require council people to make formal written open record requests to me if they called me up and say, I wanna a copy of this document and that document. I'd get it for them. I wouldn't say, well, you need to fill out a special open record request. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I.
So I don't know that we, it's good to differentiate between that and make that determinative that because they've said, I'm making a formal open record request, we should charge them as a citizen. But if they just say, well, I'm an alder and I need this information and I want you to get this for me, we shouldn't charge them?
But then doesn't that go back to you sort of determining if it's germane to their, their role?
I don't care how they call it or how they title their request. They need to tell me, I'm on this committee and I need this because we're gonna be voting on such and such down, you know, in two months. It's on the agenda and I need a lot of information. I mean, we'd have to just help the public records officer determine that. She sees all the agendas. We attend most of the meetings, so we're gonna know probably what's germane or not. But I'm not gonna make that determination based on the form their request takes. Does that make sense?
Okay, Jim?
I think I would like to see all alders obtain information at no charge or restrict them that they cannot disseminate that information to anyone that is not on the council to prevent them from circumventing.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Our costs that we're, we're gonna lose for media or other general public wanting that information or corporations that would have to normally pay for it. So if I got information, I could give it to these corporations at no charge where if the corporation would ask for it, they'd have to pay.
Correct.
So it's their, more or less circumventing the taxpayer.
Well, the other thing that happens too though is when, when it gets out that somebody like the media's made an open record request, um, and then they, they call Leslie and she, oh, we have another one like that. Well, tell me what theirs is. I'll just tag on to that. So when you're done preparing that response, I'll make an open record request for that response. And, and then they don't get charged anything because you've already done all the work and you've already located all the records.
Don't tell them that.
So, um, we've had that happen multiple times too and that gets really difficult because they don't always word their requests exactly the same. The days might be off by two or four. I'm, I'm speaking of a recent famous one that produced 15,000 sheets of paper that were stacked on my floor and I had three or four separate requests from the media, but they were all, had a couple of words that were slightly different. And finally, they just said, well, finish the first one and then the other three of us will just take what you put together.
That's not right. I mean, if you wanna, you should pay a reasonable cost for the time that we're legally allowed to charge for that. That's just, because otherwise you're.
Well, we're not preparing it four times though, so it wouldn't really be right.
The request you said might be different, so you may be.
Well, that's true. We might spend a little extra location time because somebody's time period was two weeks longer or a month longer.
We gotta abide by the laws. They should abide by some rules too.
Agreed.
Yeah, Becky?
I guess, do we need to differentiate between what information is being requested? I know that there's a lot of email requests right now and is that different than?
It's a good question.
Because that's not germane to people's, you know, to what we're voting on, right?
That's a really good question. Yes, if it's not related to a particular topic, you know, like I need to, I need to hear about what went on when we decided to build a wastewater treatment facility. So I wanna see Eric Lindman's emails, let's say, and the mayor and whoever, a designer or consultant or something. I mean, if you're just asking for emails, that's emails, but it's germane to something the city did. I mean, we get all kinds of requests. I wanna see so-and-so's Facebook comments about some media reporter. I mean, we've had to respond to those too. That, I would say, would not be germane to a topic you would be voting on it, a committee or council. I mean, everyone is gonna have to stand on its own. We're gonna have to take a really close look at it. Because an argument, I'm sure, could be made by whoever the requestor is. Well, I need these emails because it's related to this topic. Do you see what I'm saying?
It is, but it's gonna be hard.
Yeah, very hard.
You know, it's gonna be hard because then I, there's retaliatory emails right now. And I, I, I don't, I mean, I, I guess my, my whole thing is I'd like to slow this process down a bit. I, I, we are, I really like Tom's idea of money. Because I think if our residents start seeing how much money this is costing for, you know, somebody to do 10 record requests in a day, an alder, I, I think it needs to be, it needs to be out in the public. This is, you know, this isn't fun and games for our staff to, to go do this. So that's, that, that, I, I just would like a little more transparency that way.
Okay.
I don't know how you could do it, but it, it just seems like it's kind of out of control by some right now. And I, I'm, I'm a little concerned and I don't know how, you know, I don't wanna stop anybody's effort at finding information to make good, critical thinking, decision-making. That is not my point, but I, I don't see some of that right now. And it's worrisome because it's starting to snowball.
And yet we still must answer the request.
Right.
It's just, do we charge them for it or not? And then to Tom's point, should we always just add on now to our checklist? We will keep track of the time we spend responding to them, which is no problem. That should be public record.
Yep.
Well, I think if it's a records request, yeah, like you said, you know, CCIT's pretty, does a pretty accurate job at calculating. at calculating what it's going to cost in order to-
Locate the emails, yep.
Locate those, yeah. So even if, if an alder gets, you know, makes a request and it's provided gratis, they should know what that location, you know, what the value is of that, of that request, you know, what, what, what? Yeah. Just like we have-
However, they're somewhat short-staffed now too. So some of these recent ones we have, they're now suggesting that they somehow find and I don't technologically know how they do this exactly, but pull together all the emails and then they want to deposit them in our office and have our, have attorney staff at our rates spend time sorting all of them into separate files and doing all the technological stuff of naming files and setting them up and putting them in there. I mean, I would really hope that's what IT would do for us, but if you want us to do that, we'll keep track of the time we spend doing that. But it takes a horrendous amount of time. I mean, it took me nine months to read all that other stuff and I was doing that almost every day of the week for at least four hours a day, going through those and trying to redact them. And then we had to get a temporary license to get a redaction tool. Then you had to do a search for that term so you could find it elsewhere. And I, it was not a perfect response. I went back afterwards and I missed almost every single word at least once in that fifteen thousand page response. So it's, it's overwhelming really to respond to some of these requests and yet we must do it. We can't ask why, when. We can ask for clarification. We can say, this is what it's going to cost you if you want to narrow your search. Going to do what we're asked to do.
Yeah, some of those requests get really broad, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Jim?
I guess my comment before, can we restrict open records that council members have received? Can we restrict them from disseminating that information to the public because they did not pay for it?
I have two comments to that. I think that's, that's a very direct question and I had not answered it yet. I don't feel like I can tell you, the alders, my client, you can't share that piece of paper that's publicly disclosable. You can't give it out to anybody. Who am I to tell you that you can't do that or put that kind of restriction on you? If you want to put that kind of restriction on yourselves, I guess that's okay. But then it brings me to my second question. How are you ever going to enforce that? And what are you going to do about it if you find out that somebody gets huge record requests or gets lots of records and then hands them out? Are you going to spend your time now trying to trace down where they got, where some citizen got it for free? And, you know, if we're going to have the rule, then how will we enforce it? And how will you police yourselves as a body to take some action or enforce that rule? Would be my next question.
Well, I wouldn't do that to the public. I wouldn't. If someone wants your information, I'll tell them where they can go get it.
Exactly.
Unless it's something I'm working on that I need to know.
I understand that you feel that way.
And while I could see it, you know, conversely, I could see an alder stepping into a records request maybe because if it's, if, if they're getting, if the, if the public is getting pushback from the custodians too, so.
Well, and, and, you know, we want protection. We've been told, well, do your, conduct your own searches. And at one point, I, I got a call from the media and they said, we don't trust, you know, the hen watching or the fox watching the hen house. And I thought, well, you know, they really have a point. I, if somebody wants my emails, I'd rather not be the one conducting the search. I'd rather the, the process have some integrity and somebody else says, no, Ann didn't have her hands on this. She had nothing to do with it. It was independently searched. Here's all of her emails. And, and that creates problems because they don't have enough staff on IT either to,
Yeah.
to, like I said, locate these, set them up in files and all that stuff, so.
I guess the question before us is that, or Nate, do you want to?
Yeah, I was just going to add to that because I was just talking with Tara today. They asked her if she wanted to do the search and then somebody else, there was a two-way request where they wanted communications from two different people. And Tara didn't want to do it. She wanted, you know, one entity to do the search for both people because she wasn't sure if the other person would search the same way that she would. And then all of a sudden we get different results and then there's going to be a, oh, you're hiding something from me. And it's just, no, we just searched differently as well. So there's that.
The consistency.
The consistency. So that's again why CCIT does the search terms based on that. So it's an independent, consistent search.
Yeah, and I know I'm not an expert at library sciences and searching, but I can imagine. I, I know it's, yeah, it's, it's, I, 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 I under, I can understand how you word your terms. Your results will be different, so it's, but, yeah.
Also, for anybody who doesn't know, CCITC can only search one mailbox at a time. So it's not like they can say, I want all of these people with these search terms. It's one by one.
At this point, yep, they don't have the software to search across multiple mailboxes at once. And that's why it takes a dedicated employee to sit there and say, okay, now I want the emails Tom sent to Ann. And next I'm going to find the emails Ann sent back to Tom. And then I'm going to find the emails Becky sent to Ann and the emails Ann sent back to Becky. It is laborious. It is laborious. So maybe we've gotten a little off topic here. I apologize, but we always have a good discussion and you ask great questions.
And that's what I was going to say, you know, is, is that I think the question before us is that how do we, you know, because, you know, of, of what this committee can decide, you know, how do we want the, um, alders to be, you know, you know, what, what is, you know, how, how do we, how do we want them to be, be in, defined in the, in the policy statement? So what's, how will they, how will they be treated, I guess? And I don't know. Do we, we, do we need a rule? Do we need a council rule for this? If most, if, if other municipalities don't necessarily have that in their council rules, but they're just governed by this, this policy statement, would that be sufficient for us? Do we feel comfortable with that? If it gets out of hand, I suppose we could always change it. Because we can impose whatever rules we want on ourselves, so.
You're right. Whether it's by ordinance or policy or not, you're exactly right.
So could something be added in Rule fifteen about financial matters? Adding in, you know, public information requests done by alders would be also disclosed under that?
That sounds like a good place to put it. Bills, other financial claims, ordinances and resolutions appropriate and money. So what do you want to add in there, Sarah?
Is that Rule fifteen of the council rules?
Yeah.
Okay.
It would be under like fifteen A, I'm guessing, probably, right?
Under financial matters.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we could make a D. I mean, those are bills presented to the city for payment.
So just something in there that would disclose.
But it would be-
I mean, how would you disclose it? The expenses per open records request. I don't know if it would then just be an open records request or-
The estimated location fee, I think is what you're-
Mm-hmm. So like, but how is that, how that would be reported out or documented somehow? I just sort of want it documented somehow.
The cost for responding to open record requests?
By alders.
Yeah, we could add that under, just, it, it is a financial matter. We could prepare something under like a D, fifteen D. It's more like a report, yeah, that wouldn't require any approval, but like a report to a committee, either to finance or the council that-
Probably finance would be good.
Okay, of staff costs. Is that what we want? And hard costs for responding to alder open record requests?
Would that be treated like, say, when we see the quarterly insurance claims against the city? You know, that's just put, you know, we, we see the claims and that's put on file?
Yep, we just report that. Right, and we could do that, we could do this too without it adding it to the ordinance, to the council rules. Just because, just because you've asked for it, we'll just do that. Do you want that quarterly, semi-annually, annually?
Is that something that would show up on the budget?
Don't we do the claims every quarter?
It's quarter.
Okay. And Jim, what did you say about the budget?
Is that something that shows up on a budget expenditure?
You were just talking about that. It's a, it's a revenue.
And if alders take it?
That's true. For the citizens, we're not reporting that. It's a, yeah, where would that show up? I don't know if that would be in a published budget.
Because wouldn't that just be rolled into general items?
Would, would we see that, would we see that in the, um, the finance committee, um, what's that called? The P and, the profit in law, I, I, income and expenses report, so it's not really P and Ls.
But if you're asking for a translation of the cost for like staff time and hard costs spent on these items? I mean, that's not usually in the budget. You don't see in there what every member of my office spends their time on. I mean, we can certainly provide that, but that's not usually provided as part of the published budget.
I don't, just a report.
Yeah, right.
Sarah?
Yeah, I'd like to see that quarterly, I think.
Okay.
That wouldn't be too much work, would it?
We, I mean, we keep track of it anyway. We'll just tickle it to make that report.
Yes, that don't, there aren't-
Quarterly basis.
There aren't that many requests from alders that we would need to go more frequently than that, I would, I would think.
Oh, no, I wouldn't think so.
You know, if, if there's, if there's three to a half a dozen in a quarter, it would be, I would, I would be fine with that, so.
And that, this is staff costs only in responding to alders' requests, not all open record requests, correct?
I think, Tom, that's what-
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
No, yeah, if, 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 if the general public wants an open records request and it's over, you know, it's over fifty dollars and there's the location fee. If it's under fifty dollars, you know,
Right.
You know, that's, that's, you know, keep handling that the way we've always done that.
Okay, very good.
Because I don't think we, I don't think we can make that determin, this committee could make that determination, so.
Thank you. I think that's good then. I think we'll take this policy maybe to another committee if we want to build on the policy and take that through a committee to council. We can always do that separately, but I've got good direction on this. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any, anything else on that item? Not hearing anything. Number five, discussion and possible action on amending rules relating to meetings of governmental bodies relating to requiring dial-in option be placed on agenda and be made available at all meetings of governmental bodies.
So we put in your packet the, the rules that you adopted on April twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-one. And if you look under the be it resolved paragraph, there's six rules. And the fifth one, and it says it'll be in effect unless amended or terminated by the council. So if we go with number five, every person responsible for noticing it in an agenda shall ensure that there's a dial-in option made available. The question is, do you wish to continue that or not? Now that you are, you and all committees are meeting in person, we've, we've eliminated the restriction on the number of people that can gather in our facility. So presumably it's open to the public and any number that can fit into this room can come to a meeting. So you're not required, I don't believe under the open meeting law to provide a dial-in option any longer. However, there's nothing that prevents you from doing that. But I don't feel that's a decision I can or should be making, so that's why we've brought that to you.
And there's no ADA violation because if somebody wants to make an ADA reasonable accommodation, they would request the dial-in option. We would make that available to them. Not just as a general blanket open dial-in option for anybody.
Tom?
Yes, I, I'm in favor of, of not continuing that option. You know, barring somebody requesting it on a ad hoc basis. It's just, it's unreasonable, you know, on us on staff. You know, we make every other accommodation, you know, through, you know, our presence on the web, you know, through video and whatnot and in-person here. That I just think it's more than we need to do and it's just not convenient, so. But we can accommodate upon request.
Yep.
Sarah?
So how long does it, I mean, what is the process to setting up that call-in number? Is it, is it, does it take a long time? Is it sort of complicated?
It's not complicated. It's just a matter of when I set up the meeting to do that extra stuff and then get that language on the agenda to include that.
Okay. Because I sort of like the idea of more transparency and another way of reaching out to people. But I don't want to unduly, you know, create extra work for staff. But I also, I mean, because they're not, it's not WebEx anymore, right? So that's not like they can speak. They're just listening.
Correct. That's my understanding, right? Leslie, they're just dialing in to listen to the meeting. They're not, they're not, they're not getting WebEx invitations. They can't interrupt. They can't speak or be seen or see us. They're literally just dialing in to listen to monitor the meeting, correct?
They are, but they, they can give public comment through that link.
Okay.
Because they can speak if we, if the chair allows. Or sometimes I'll have people that say, can you send me the link? Because they've requested to give public comment in, you know, in person or however you want to say it so we can see them. And then I would send the link.
So they can still like, like on our rules review committee agenda, it says call in their access code and password. So are there anybody called, like, is anybody called in now or?
No.
No?
I don't think the, I don't even think the computer's on for that.
So it is. I just don't have it up there.
Oh, you don't have it up on there? Okay.
Okay. So it's not a huge, huge burden, but I don't know. I guess my, my thing would be, I like the transparency. I like the options. But also, I mean, we can't all be back in person now, so.
Is this, does this, is this preventing staff from using the dial-in option to give staff reports? Or so, so if, if a department head needs to provide information, they're, they'll be present at the meeting in the future or? Or is that?
Well, the rule here under number two, although that was pursuant to the authority granted under the proclamation of the state of emergency for the mayor, which we've now terminated. But because she supervises department heads as staff and as employees, I would think that would be the mayor's decision whether or not she demands or requires employees or department heads or other staff to appear personally at meetings or not. And I know that she does not mind them appearing by WebEx. So we had it written in here that unless any chair can ask any staff person or department head to appear in person, if, if they need to be there to present something or you've got exhibits to show or something that makes sense, you should be there in person. But for just, for any other meeting or for council, I think we've left it that the mayor would decide whether the department heads need to be there or not. And I think she's okay, like I said, with WebEx for them. Now, you know, we've got consultants and developers and people sometimes that have to appear that way because they're in Milwaukee or Minneapolis or whatever. So that option would remain available for staff, I guess, whose personal appearance is not requested by a chair of a committee or required and/or outside council, for instance, if we're in a closed session or a developer or somebody that's not making a, you know, a presentation with documents or something like that.
So like if, if, and Leslie, maybe you can, you can chime in here. So if a developer or say a consultant wanted to appear at the meeting, they would contact you and then you would facilitate them being on, on the, you know, appearing virtually then?
I would set up the WebEx and send them the link.
Okay, okay.
But that's different than the dial-in option?
It, it's, it's all in the same thing. It's just, the difference is that the, the agenda where it's the dial-in option, those people are not able to log into our meeting and be seen and see us. They can only call in from a telephone and talk to us or hear us.
So, you know, so a, a high percentage of the time, you're probably still setting up a WebEx for, for, for say a committee or a council meeting?
If there's a developer that needs to appear that way, yes, or if there would be, or if we allow staff to appear virtually, I would.
But you wouldn't, but, you know, if, if we, you know, depending on what we decide tonight, you wouldn't, you wouldn't put the dial-in option on the agenda then, so.
I think I would have to if I set it up that way, right, Ann?
If you set up?
If, if I'm going to allow a dial-in option for a developer or someone to appear virtually, I would have to include that dial-in option for the public as well or not?
I would think I would. How would you, how would you physically manage that? I mean, every time the phone rings or they dial in, I, I don't feel comfortable asking members of the public that dial in and you see a phone number there, who are you, you know, where are you calling from? They don't need, the public doesn't need to identify themselves to us. So how are you going to know when they call in if it's somebody that's presenting at the meeting or if it's just somebody that wants to listen in?
So, so I think the question is though, if I allow a developer to appear virtually-
Right.
Can I just not publish it on the agenda or let the public know that they could appear virtually?
Yes. I think you can do that.
I can do that.
Yes.
Okay.
If, if they decide now to get rid of the dial-in option for WebEx going forward, it, I, it's my understanding it can be made available to staff if they are allowed to appear remotely by WebEx and for a developer or somebody like that that needs to appear. But it's the dial-in thing. I don't feel comfortable saying to you, you don't have to put that, nobody has to put that on an agenda anymore. And, you know, we've got the transparency argument. I mean, we have different opinions, so.
Yeah. Tom?
Yeah, I, I'm still, I'm pretty much in favor of the idea of, you know, by request, you know, unless you're a, a member of the committee or a m- member of staff, an outside party like a developer or whatever who's offsite somewhere, uh, who is part of the agenda and whatnot, part of a presentation, um, and they're all going to get, you know, uh, sent like invites to the meeting with links to, you know, the meeting, et cetera. That's fine. You know, we can just make it policy that any member of the public that would like to attend via phone, you know, would need to call, you know, the clerk's office or whatever and, uh, register, just like they have to register here for public comment, and, and then they would be given a, a, you know, passcode, you know? That way you don't just have willy-nilly a whole bunch of, you know, phone numbers hanging out there, don't know who they are, you know, uh, you know, why are they there, whatever. Is that so-and-so that we're looking for? Because we're hoping to have so-and-so join us tonight? Is that you? And they don't, they don't respond or whatnot.
Yeah.
And it's like, you know, we're making it available, but, you know, at least make it a, a process like, you know, a request, just like we do for public comment. Uh, you know, we're accommodating, but it's, it's not just, you know, random, you know, anybody at any time at the last second could just go, oh, okay, you know, I'm going to go up there, you know, and then you have to deal with them on screen and whatnot, so.
Becky, did you have something too, or no?
I was just going to say, it, the only thing about the dial-in is it is disruptive at times as well. It is, it is, you know, a constant in and out, in and out. And so I, I think it's, it's, you know, some people haven't had that without, so you don't know that this is all disruptive. We didn't have that. And, um, you know, you can't hear also. I, I would really, um, like to push the public not to do comment by phone. Somebody had the last, and I couldn't hear, I would say 90% I could not understand and hear. So, I mean, I, I want people to understand that that's not a real great way of doing it. You're not hearing. And then that constant where they go, well, I'm sick of this, and then they call back and it's in and out. Um, it's disruptive. And I, I don't see, I mean, I know it was needed, but I don't think it's needed anymore. And I think we need, you know, we've been kind of pushing to get back to regular order. I know that there's some things that we're saying, oh, well, you know, that's, you know, post-COVID, it would be nice, but I'd like to get back to regular order. I think, um, I don't think a lot of people use it. Um, and when they do, it's disruptive. So I, I'm, I'm with Tom. I mean, if somebody absolutely needs it, they can, they can make a request. But otherwise, I think we should go back, you know, we got all the chairs here now. We can go back to regular order.
But if it's just dial-in, they can't interrupt, right? Or do you mute them, Leslie? I mean, if they're, if they're just dialing in to listen, they shouldn't be allowed to disrupt our meeting.
Right. I do have them muted, but they can, they could unmute themselves.
Oh, so they could disrupt? Okay. Well, that's, that answers my question.
Nathan and Jim?
Sure. And Leslie, I think for your question about if you present, or if you give the dial-in option to a developer, do you then still need to, if one person says they need to do the dial-in, are you asking then, since one person says it, do I need to include it on the agenda?
Yes.
That's what your question is?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, she's wondering if one person requested, then, okay, now it's all, now it's open to everybody since one person wanted it. And I think she's asking, well, if one person wants it, then that person gets it, but it's still not open to the public.
Right, and that's what I understood her to say.
Oh, okay, all right.
And that's what I'm saying, is you can provide a WebEx invite to developers or people on the agenda or staff, you know, to appear at that meeting, but you could still take the dial-in option off and not agendize that. Yes.
Okay, Jim?
A question, then a comment. So the dial-up option was put in place to help the public because of the pandemic?
Because, well, it was a, of opinion by the Attorney General's Office to comply with the open meetings law, that that almost be required. When we were meeting remotely, we had to give the public the same opportunity to appear by some remote means to monitor our operations.
So now that you say that, now it's, uh, everything's open again, so that's not required or suggested anymore?
Well, they don't make suggestions. I'm just saying it's not required that we do it anymore because we're all appearing in person. But it's a nice transparent thing. Like I said, you could still do it if you want. You could direct us to continue it, not recommend changing this rule. But there's no requirement. I'm not telling you, suggesting that you need to do it to comply with the open meetings law. No, you don't need to do it for that.
So to, so to simplify things and get things back running all the way before 2020 and become back, or say get back to the norm, I would move that we do away with the dial-in.
Right, putting it on the agenda, right.
Correct.
Except for accommodation requests. Yep.
Okay. A motion by Wodenski, a second by Neil. Discussion, Sarah?
So, um, Alder McElhenney, the what, some of the stuff that you sort of mentioned, um, like the dinging and unmuting, there are controls that hosts have, like you can turn off the ding. Um, and you can actually, there's a toggle that says allow attendees to unmute themselves, and you can uncheck that. So, I mean, there are ways to control this a little bit more and make it a little less disruptive. Um, just coming from, like, teaching a lot of Zoom classes, I've learned some tips and tricks on how to make it, you know, available to students who can't come or are distanced or whatever. Um, but then it's not disruptive to the other, other classmates. So there are options. I, I just still, I really like the idea of the transparency. Um, and if it's not a huge labor to get that, you know, link out on the agenda, um, I, I, I definitely want to see it still there, but.
As far as I know, they can, but, but maybe there is a control that I don't know of. So I may just have to look into it.
Yeah, there's lots of settings. Like if you drill down, like there's settings in, you know, those things. So, I mean, those could be things that, that we look into if we do keep it.
Jim?
I think we're very transparent compared to what we were a couple of years ago because now all meetings are recorded or out for public view. I mean, I didn't think that hardly anybody used the dial-in. Very seldom did I see it used. And so I just think it's something we can do without again and get back to normal.
You know, yeah, if we're in this room and, you know, the meetings are being streamed live onto YouTube, so it is, anybody can pick that up there. Um, unless you don't have data or something, I suppose, then you would need to use a, you know, a telephone if you wanted to listen in and not, and not attend the meeting in person, so. But now that we don't, we, you know, we don't have capacity limits in this room and, um, we've got the streaming options that are, that are available. It's, I, I guess I see, yeah, personally, I see that the dial-in, you know, for, for the public to, to participate is maybe not necessary anymore, so. I guess that's my feeling. Any other discussion?
I just have a quick question for clarity. So then does that mean that staff, I'm still supposed to send a WebEx link to staff to appear virtually? Or is that going back that they have to appear in person as well?
I believe that will be up to the mayor.
No, that, yeah, that was, yeah, I think, yeah, Anne, Anne said that the, that was, that's the mayor's decision if, if, if she will allow staff to attend virtually.
Or chairs.
Or an invited guest from out of town, like a developer?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not going to control non-employees, and they're not Alders, so they're not, it's not that they're, they're part of the agenda. So that's, we've always allowed them to appear by remotely, even in the past before the pandemic, so that won't change. But what do we do if you just routinely send like a WebEx invite, let's say, to staff, and some chair asks one or two of us to appear in person at a meeting? I mean, you send WebExes to me all the time, and I just decline them, and I send you a note and say I plan to appear in person. I mean, well, would that work for, or the chair's asked me to appear in person, so I just decline your invitation? Is that what we do? Just operate on a case-by-case basis? And you all know for any committees that you chair, you can always ask whoever's presenting materials to be there in person, and I'm sure any staff member would accommodate that request?
Well, if we're looking at that resolution at the end of the packet, like, why can't we just strike number two? Or say, you know, all, you know, everybody has to attend in person? Because I think, I mean, it's, it's doing an extra step. I mean, if she's doing the extra step already, why not just put it on the agenda? That's what I don't get. So, um, I mean, if we're going to make everybody come, make everybody come.
And that's fine too. Yeah, because now, and two is still problematic because the proclamation is terminated. So now it's not by her authority under the proclamation. It's just under her authority as our supervisor of staff and department head. So we could, we could tweak number two as well.
Does then just make every, I mean, then Leslie wouldn't have to do these extra WebEx meetings, and everybody would go back to the four times.
I suppose you could as the council, because, I mean, this is your resolution. We changed these two rules. They come back to you, and you say we require all staff to appear in person. You could do that too. Is that what you're suggesting?
I guess I just see that if they're going to be, you know, speaking, of course, but, I mean, if they aren't required to attend, then I don't think there should be an option for them to attend on WebEx.
Right, they're either here in person or they're not.
Hmm, that's my thoughts.
Because if you're taking away, if you take away the dial-in option. Thoughts?
I'm still in support of the, the motion and second.
Okay. So any other, I guess, any other discussion? One way or the other?
Just to clarify, so this vote is just on the dial-in option, or have we included staff now?
Yes. No, the motion was just to, on number five. Was it not to delete number five?
To de-agendize?
Right, to take off the dial.
Did, yeah.
To not require a dial-in option be provided on all agendas anymore. Yep, I think that was the motion.
Yeah, yeah, glad you brought that up. I was, I was about, I was just about to restate, have the motion restated, so it's.
That probably wouldn't be a bad idea. Don't count on me to restate it. Do you have it written down, Leslie?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to repeat it for us?
The motion is to remove number five so that a dial-in option would not be provided on agendas.
Okay. Um, any other discussion? I'm not seeing anything. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, uh, four to one. It carries. Yeah, let me slide back here to number six, discussion and possible action on public submission of written public comment.
I didn't put anything in the packet on this one, but it might be something we could put in our rules under citizen comment. I don't know, again, if it's something you even want in the rules or not, but we've, and Leslie can chime in here, but we've run into problems where we've had mountainous submissions of very lengthy, um, emails from folks under public comment, and they're coming in right up until two minutes before the meeting starts. She's already in here trying to set up, and then people are upset that they didn't receive the comments. So I think she's in agreement with me that we would recommend that you establish a cutoff of 24 or 48 hours or whatever you think's appropriate to say that the staff or the clerk's office will accept public comment in writing from whoever up until some point before that a meeting for which the public comment is offered is starting, and that all public comment will be forwarded to all council members. So you have it, but it, does it need to be uploaded to the packet or given to the public? Or can we just give it to the Alders? You know, send it to you so you all have it, and you, you're informed when you make your decisions? But do we need to give it, do we need to publish it all in the packet? And then the other thing is, we're not going to read them all when we get to the meeting. We're not going to spend the first 45 minutes reading everybody's public comment. We've given it to the Alders, and now we're going to place the rest of it on file, and we could know it, or the mayor could know it if it's a council meeting, for instance. We received 60 public comments on this matter. Generally speaking, 40 of them are for this measure and 20 are against. I mean, you could make a comment like that, but beyond that, we're recommending that you cut them off at a certain point, that they be provided only to council and then be placed on file. So if somebody wants to make a request for them, they can certainly have them, but we're not going to publish them or read them at meetings.
Yeah, I was going to ask if, if it's public comment, does it need to be read into the record some, of some?
No.
Okay.
Nope, it's placed on file, and we've, we've alerted the Alders. The Alders are going to get it. You can choose to read them all or not, but you will always be provided all the public comment that the clerk's office gets.
As long as it's distributed to, to the body, we're, we're fine on an open, open meeting standpoint. Okay. You know, no, I, you know, it's, I, uh, I, I'm, I'll, I'll let you go there in a second here, Jim, but, uh, I, you know, I think with the, I kind of, I'm, I'm very amenable to having like a 24-hour cutoff, because I know that the last council meeting, we had comments coming up to and during the meeting. Uh, so, um, it's, it would be good to get those in an appropriate amount of time so that we would, as a body, would be able to digest them a little bit, so. Yeah, Jim?
Yeah, I was going to say 48, but 24 would be a minimum. But my, uh, other question is, when we have public comment, they state their name and address. Does written public comment, can we require name and address?
I think that's on the form, isn't it?
Is it, Leslie?
Not all public comment that I've seen.
No, they just send in their email. They just, you just see their email address, right?
So I have no idea if they're even from Wisconsin.
Well, that's true. That's true.
Well, there's two different kinds of public comment. I mean, there's, there's the web form that's on the city, on the city's site, but then there's also, um, emails, emails, you know, we will receive a big flurry of emails from people that, you know, they'll, they'll send, you know, send a message to every, every Alder. Um, and I think that's, that's the one where you don't know if they're, if they're a resident or not. Um, but the ones on the, on the, you know, the, the form ha, does have address on it, so if I remember correctly.
I suppose you could ask, but how would, how would you get that word out? I mean, like you said, somebody from anywhere can look at our website and find an email address to get into the building somehow, or get to the general clerk's address, and they just send it in, and they, here's my public comment. I want it published. I want it read at your meeting, and they, we don't even know, like you said, whether they even live in our state.
I, I, I weigh the comment differently according to, are they one of my?
Well, I was just going to say that should.
Are they a city resident or non-resident? Are they one of my direct constituents or not my direct constituents? How should I weigh that?
I was just going to say, you could certainly take that into account in how you weight that comment.
Some of those comments, I look at them, and there's really not much information on them. I, I more or less kind of disregard them.
But if we, I mean, we get emails all the time. Would, would an email from a person, be it a constituent or not, is that considered a public comment to a meeting versus what the web form allows? Because the web form does say public comment, so.
Yeah, they don't have to be a citizen. I, you know, they can be anything.
I don't know how you handle those, Leslie, so speak up if I'm missing something, or you disagree with me, or I, how, how you're handling those when they come in. I don't see those forms.
So a couple of things. First of all, going back to the requiring a 24 or 48-hour cutoff, I don't know how you would do that because the public comment form, they go on, they click a link completely separate from everything.
Oh, okay.
And it just comes in.
Okay.
So I can't control that.
But you're going to stop looking at it at some point. I, I'm thinking and not be held to some standard of forwarding it to all the council while they're taking their seats when the meeting's ready to start, kind of a thing. Okay.
Right. So that's one thing. Um, I think you and I looked at some rules before, and I think you had told me that people don't, can't be required to say who they are if they want to give public comment. So to your point about can we require them to give us an address and a name, I, I don't, I don't, I think we looked at some stuff that said you can't do that. I think we do it and people just comply, but I don't know what happened if someone came to the podium and said, I don't want to give my address.
Well, yeah, and I'm not differentiate that between public comment and, um, just appearing at a meeting. I mean, if a whole room shows up to watch municipal court, I don't think it's appropriate to go through the crowd and say, who are you? What's your name and your address, and why are you here to watch open court? Or you're here to watch this committee meeting, uh, who are you? What's your name and your address, and why are you here? They're just here to monitor the meeting. They're not getting up to give public comment. Does our rule require that they identify themselves and give name and address to make public comment? That must just be a habit that we've created then. It's not required that they get up and identify themselves. But I guess for the record, we've always requested that, and yet we don't get that through the public or the web form, I mean, the email form.
mean, the email form.
Right. So I guess this agenda item came because I have alders that will send me an email saying, hey, can you please include all of this in the packet, you know, a day before the meeting? So I think what we're really looking for is some guidance on, okay, if I get the request, am I supposed to include that in the packet? Is there a standard that it's, that any public comment receives so many hours before a meeting should be uploaded? Or is it okay to continue doing what I've been doing, just forwarding it to all of you so you have it? And if one of the alders wants to read it onto the record, you guys have that?
Ability.
Yeah, to do that.
Becky?
I know, I know that this has been, we've had some big issues this term, and there were some emails, well, there's a couple of issues, but there were some emails coming in that was not put in the packet by, it was by ED. And then there was a big kind of kerfuffle after that, why wasn't that in if you used that? And so my question, and I just want, I'm not taking a side here, but, you know, we talk about transparency. If we're getting emails from the outside, not even from residents, but this was from somebody that had done business with somebody that wanted to do business with the city, it was a neg, you know, pretty negative email, but she put her name, and she, she sat by those comments. If we are going to be considering that as a committee, as part of our vote, is that a transparency issue for us to include that, that we, you know, that this was part of our decision-making? I'm kind of just posing that question because that is what, there was, you know, another alder saying, look, you know, you need to show what we're looking at, and that's part of our decision-making process of this kind of, you know, the big tranche of public comment. I don't know, I don't have a real strong feeling either way, but I know that's something, you know, how, how do we, how do we, you know, Sarah brought up transparency, how do we do transparency of the complete, you know, things, you know, that we are considering within our, our decision-making process? Because when people come up here to the podium, everybody knows what was said, but they don't know what they don't know.
Oh, I see what you're saying. They don't know because we don't publish.
Public, yeah, yeah.
All of the, the tranche of public comment we're emailing to you.
So we have 10 people up here who are negative, and we go, but we may have had 50. That's, you know, and, and we can say, well, we got public comment.
I guess that's what you do then, is say, I voted this way because I've got other comment, other than what you saw presented in person.
And so some alders have come to me and been very, and that's why I've gone to Leslie, should we do this? Because it is part of our decision-making process, and, and I, I struggle sometimes with somebody, I guess if they've gone the extra step of coming up, name, address, this is how I feel compared to people are saying, well, we're going to give you this option, but we're not going to really make it public. I mean, it's only going to alders. I, I don't know. I mean, is that an issue to think about?
Mr. Chair? Yeah, I do think we're over, overthinking it because, I mean, it is an element of feedback, sure, you know, and I, I'm in favor of, you know, 48 hours, you know, is a good cutoff. I don't like 24. You know, for, for any, you know, written submissions to be, you know, sent into, into the packet or forwarded to us or whatever, I don't really care. But, you know, we also, you know, I get feedback out in the street, you know? I don't have to quantify that. You know, I can, I can read feedback on Facebook. I don't have to quantify that as having influenced my voting decisions or whatnot. You know, if there's a, an avenue where it comes directly to the city, you know, then let's just set a policy to where it's manageable and fair, and then we can, you know, we can put it out there in whatever form. We can, we can archive it and say it's available to anybody that wants to look at it, you know? We can have a set up, a cutoff point of 48 hours, 72 hours, something that makes it reasonable for staff to include whatever came up to that deadline and get that into the packet. Anything that came after the deadline, it can go in the file, but it doesn't go into the packet. And it can still be forwarded to us, as you've been doing, that's fine. We have access to it. And if I want to sit here and read, you know, an email that didn't get into the packet, I can do that if I want to here, but let's just not overthink it and make it a burdensome process. Let's just, let's just, you know, I could write a million letters to Madison, they're not going to be reading them down there and, you know, at the Capitol.
Okay, can I quantify, so you think they should be in the packet, though?
Again, up to a reasonable cutoff.
Up to cutoff time, okay.
Not 24 hours. I think that's just too, that's too tight. I mean, 48, 72, those are fine with me, if they're fine with you, because the rest still get filtered to us, and they are communications essentially to us, you know? And we can, we can read them, we can take them to heart, we can ignore them, whatever we want to do, we can, we can read them out here if we want to. So, I'm just saying, let's just not, you know, make it crazy and get it, you know, like Santa's, you know, toy bag just full of everything at the last minute, you know, endless, you know, stuff, trying to make it under the wire.
Yeah, go ahead, Sarah.
Um, could we just make it like two business days? Because I don't, I mean, I know, like, most council meetings are on Tuesdays, and you would have Monday to do some, some magic, but, I mean, at least give you working days to do this instead of weekends?
Like by end of business day, like by, you know, like 4 o'clock or 4:30 or whatever.
To be included in the packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah, otherwise, otherwise your comment will be outside the packet, will be, I guess, submitted on a time-available basis.
Does that need a motion, Mr. Chair?
Because some, yeah, sometimes those packets don't get published until 72 hours before the meeting.
I don't know that we need a motion, Tom, unless, I mean, we got direction to staff, unless you want it codified as a rule or something somewhere. I think we're good with that. We don't need that to go to council. Are you good with that, Leslie?
I am, yes.
Yeah.
So is everybody in agreement by consensus on that, then?
What is it, 48, 48-hour business days?
Two business days in advance of the meeting start, she will provide the public comment or upload it to the packet.
Yeah, so if, so if the council meeting's on Tuesday, it would be the close of Friday.
We're still not going to read them all on the record at the meeting. We'll place them on file, but they will be made available to the public either in an archived file, like you suggested, that's a great suggestion, or just by calling you and saying, did I miss any public comment?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So, I think we're done with that. And item number seven, items to be agendized for next meeting and set our next meeting date, so.
I just asked, I was called this weekend, and I promised that this alder couldn't be there. They would like us to discuss something for next term as a new council rule of how many chairmanships an alder can have.
So when you say next term, you mean this committee should discuss it after April of 2021?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I don't, well, I guess we could discuss it now because we're not going to change chairs, but it would be, you know, because we don't pick chairs until the new term, right? And...
Yeah, but if you set that rule now, once the new council's elected and is seated in April of 2022, they can, they could just get rid of whatever rule you set now, they can set their own rules.
Okay, well, I just, I just...
So you really can't consider it now and vote on it to apply to the next term.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, this is, I just, I just promised that I would bring it up.
Certainly.
That they wanted, they have a concern about, you know, that if we should talk about how many chairmanships one alder can...
And that would be a rule change. We've made changes to those, to chairmanship things in the past in the council rules, so that is, that is in your rules, what kind of power and authority you want to give to a mayor to make chair assignments or whatever restrictions the council votes to put on that, that's up to you. And we've seen that change over the time I've been here. But you can't bind a future council to a new term. They get to set their own rules, unfortunately. And you're right, I don't know if you changed it now, if...
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it would be...
I don't know that you could...
No, I mean, I don't see anything that would...
I don't know how you'd implement that.
No, you wouldn't.
Yeah, so, well, okay. Any others? Any other future agenda items?
Move to adjourn.
Otherwise, otherwise, oh, meeting date, before we move, meeting date?
Thank you, Tom.